Uh, Mr. Isaac, would you do roll call please?
Yep, Doug Ben Scooter.
Here.
Stephanie Garner.
Here.
David Heuser.
Here.
David Larson.
Here.
John Meyer.
Here.
Kate Payne.
Here.
Kathy Olson.
Here.
Okay. We need approval of the agenda for May 5th.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Approval of the minutes for April 7th.
I make a motion to approve the April 7th minutes.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay. Now we're at the public hearing. There's two items in the public hearing today. Do we want to go one at a time?
Yes.
Okay, let's do one at a time. Isaac, if you would explain or go through, does special use permit? Special provisional use request for 104 Willow Circle on Waverly, please.
Yes, so Al Stern is the applicant. He's applying on behalf of Edna Brunkhorst, requesting special provisional use to install a roof mounted solar system. Proposed solar system would be located on the rear roof facing south away from Willow Circle. There'll be a total of 15 modules. Each module will be approximately 40 and a half by 68 and a half inches. Three foot fire access path is shown on page four of the attached solar system plans. That shows the three foot fire access on the east and north side of the south facing roof face. And then there's also, you can see that there is a path on the south side where the modules will sit, so the modules will not be hanging off the side of the roof. Modules will project at least three inches from the roof, but no more than six as described in the plans. We did receive one email, or excuse me, one mail from an individual, but I'm not going to read it because she's, the individual stated that they had talked to the owner at the Brunkhorst, that they didn't have an issue with it, and then they proceeded to make a nuisance complaint about a property in the neighborhood. And we keep that confidential, so I'm not including that in the packet. Other than that, we didn't hear from anybody else. Staff's recommendation is to approve the special provisional use.
Okay, well, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone has anything to say? I'll close the public hearing. Does anybody have any questions or comments or thoughts on this?
I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the special provisional use for 104 Willow Circle to the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Okay. So now is there any discussion?
I do have one question. We haven't seen a fire access on these in the past. What is that about?
Is that a code requirement?
So that's something that's specific to Midwest Solar. We have one other for Midwest Solar that I don't think they ended up going through with it, but their plan showed a fire access. So I think it's required, it's just that it kind of differentiates between firms on whether or not they show it on their plans or not. Our specific code just requires that the modules can't overhang the edge of the roof.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay. All in favor? Please identify by saying yes or aye.
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the second item on the, for the public hearing? Rezoning requests for the Waverly properties? There's a lot of them.
Yes, so a couple of months ago, we brought forward a lot of rezoning of properties that were located in the drive run. This is kind of an extension of that, and just cleaning up some other properties that are in the drive run, then also City Hall, and then the building just south of City Hall here, that's the generators for the dam. We're rezoning those. The City Hall from U1 to C2, and then this building just south of us from U1 to C3. That building half of the property is currently zoned C3 right now, and the north half is zoned U1. So we just felt like we were going to continue the C3. And then staff, we're kind of moving towards getting away from pushing C3 further away from Bremer Avenue. C3 is more of our downtown district anyways, so if we're going to zone something commercial, we're kind of pushing away from just extending that C3 zone. So that's why we're rezoning City Hall C2. The rest of the properties are all being rezoned either from R2, 1 and 2 family residential to U1, or R1 single family to U1. Again, the properties are located essentially extensions of the drive run. There's one property that is owned by the Iowa DOT that's on the corner of Fourth and Second Avenue. We did contact them. They said, "We don't have an issue with it. You can't build anything on that lot anyways." Even just from a practicality standpoint, it's too small to build anything, so they had used it previously, and they don't have any issue with us rezoning it to U1 now, so... I'm not going to issue a recommendation as we are the applicant.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to, open up the public meeting. If there is anyone that would like to talk or discuss the rezoning of these properties. Okay, I'll close the public meeting. My comment, I, interesting, but do we need a motion? Then we'll discuss it.
I'll move that Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the rezoning request for multiple City of Waverly properties to the City Council.
Second. Okay. For discussion? So it's U, it's U1 right now, and we're going to rezone the one particular property, the one we're sitting on.
Correct.
To commercial.
Correct. So we felt that's the use of City Hall is, fits more with the C2 district than a residential district. We're not saying that it necessarily fits within the C2, but that's the best fit. We have no intentions of using this property for anything other than what we're currently using it for, but we felt that C2 was the best fit, so...
In the power plant, that's been getting a lot of press lately, too.
Yeah, right now, City is moving forward with kind of determining what the status of the building is, and then once we kind of determine that and potential usability, then we'll potentially look at different uses for it, whether that be renting it out to somebody, selling it to somebody, that has not been determined. That will ultimately be determined by City Council.
Would it make more sense, when you determine what you want to use it for, to rezonate at that point versus, you know, you're kind of pigeonholing yourself into a commercial property, and if you want to use it for manufacturing, then you have to rezone it again.
Yeah, and, I mean, we could, we could go down that path. Again, staff felt that since the south half of that property is currently zoned C3, just continuing that zone to the entire property made sense, and if we did end up selling it to somebody and they felt that it's C2, C1, or our whatever zone district would better fit the property, then they could go through that rezoning process.
So was there, you know, there's a lot of names on the contact list. Any feedback from any of those that you could share?
We received one person that was asking simply for more information, and then we received an email from one person that was requesting to purchase one of the properties. We told them that we couldn't sell it because it's a flood buyout lot. We would have to get it released from FEMA, but they didn't have any comments about rezoning it.
On the, on the power plant, on the drawing, it doesn't include where the turbines are over the causeway. I mean, that is actually out in the floodway, and I'm not sure what can be done with that and how it can be dealt with, but I assume that still stays probably as it is, as environmentally sensitive. Is that going to prohibit making it into something, like a public access museum or a living garden?
Potentially, yeah, potentially it might be something that we'd have to look at in redrawing how that property line is. But, yeah, I don't have a good answer for you on that.
Well, like I said, it's in the floodway. I'm not sure you can do much with it.
Yeah.
Other than what it is. Obviously, the utility felt it wasn't worth the expense of the hassle of getting it recertified or recommissioned, so...
Just for my personal benefit, so C3, you have those residential lots above there. C3 allows for that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Please identify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. On to regular business. I am number one. Anna State's first edition plat. Isaac?
Yes, so in November, November it came to us, then December 6th it was approved by City Council. Preliminary plat for Anna State's subdivision, that was for the entire subdivision. Since then, Bartles, the Bartles Lutheran Home, the applicant, has broken that into a first edition, and if you look at the plat, they have what they're not, the rest of the subdivision is labeled Outlot B and Outlot A. Before that, can, either one of those outlets can be developed, they would have to come back and redo another final plat. So the original, the entire preliminary plat included 13 lots, 62 structures and 98 units. Anna State's first edition will just be four lots. There'll be 47 dwelling units, and then those dwelling units will consist of 22 duplexes and seven single-family residences. The single-family residences will be located on Lot 4 on the east side of what is Knight Avenue, and then lots 1 and 3 will be the duplexes. So they'll have access from the south, from Knight Avenue, that'll be extended north, and then from Park Avenue extended to the west. There will be a clubhouse and parking on Lot 4, and then the clubhouse will, Lot 4 will also include a walking path that'll access to, there's a park, Hickory Heights Park, just directly to the east of Lot 4, and there's been discussions about other amenities putting, being put into that park. So John contacted me earlier this week and had some questions about enforcement of a SWIP plan, so I did reach out to Matt Schock, he's the engineer for this, for this project, and he said that it'll be responsibility of the general, who's Dave Schmidt, to enforce slash follow the requirements regarding maintenance and record-keeping bookwork. And then he said he believes their local sub is going to be TEAT, so TEAT will be actually putting in place, and then it'll be on Dave to make sure, Dave Schmidt, to make sure that he's enforcing and following those rules. And then he also had a question about city maintaining the retention-detention basins. At this point, there's not been discussion about giving those retention-detention basins over to the city, so it'll be on Bartles to maintain those in such a way that they're keeping them free of noxious weeds, they're working as they're supposed to. So, we do have a representative from Bartles here today. City's recommendation is to approve the final plat for Anna State's first edition. Oh, I will add one more thing. So I sent out documents yesterday, they were given to me by the city engineer, Mike Cherry. They are simply stating that Matt Schock, the engineer, has requested to use PVC piping, plastic water pipe, and instead of ductile iron, ductile iron is what the city code states is our standard unless given a variance by the Public Works Director, who's designated, being Mike Cherry. This was something that Matt Schock actually was the engineer for Whitetail Bluffs. We approved the use of plastic for that subdivision, and it has worked very well. It's something that Mike has informed me is, something that's becoming more popular around the state, and that's something that they are essentially using. Anna State's first edition and Whitetail Bluff is like a trial to see how it works, and then they'll, based on the results, they'll look at potentially changing the code, so... He said it's ultimately on you guys to approve it with the final plat, but he doesn't have an issue with that being approved.
Is there any negative out there? I mean, I, you know...
He didn't inform me of any negative, so...
I guess I'll comment.
I was hoping, that's why I asked, I figured you'd know.
The C900 plastic water main has been used for over 20 years throughout the state of Iowa. It's been part of the SUDAS standard, I think, since SUDAS was adopted as an alternate use. And it's, it's good stuff. I was surprised when I moved to Waverly seven years ago, and started working in subdivisions for the engineering department, that we were still all putting in ductile iron pipe. I mean, it's, the price point has changed lately because plastics are getting a lot more expensive, but the construction is so much simpler. One guy can pick up a 20-foot piece of eight-inch pipe and handle it, whereas if you have ductile iron, it always takes a machine and people, you know, it's just a different world.
That's what I was looking for, because I knew you had it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's very common.
Yeah, okay.
And it's good stuff.
Is that considered to be HDPE as well?
No, it's a PVC.
Just, it's a little less grade?
Well, C900 is, there are two plastic pipe specifications. One is an ASTM, I think, 2241 or something, and that is used a lot by rural water companies. It's not as good. C900 is dimensionally the same as ductile iron pipe, and you can use many ductile iron fittings on C900 pipe, because it is dimensioned the same. But it's, I mean, and the 150, which is the common weight, is, is a 500 PSI rated pipe, so it's, it's, that's pretty good stuff.
Any other comments?
So there, there is no entrance slash exit off 20th, is that correct, except?
At this point, there is not.
Okay.
Correct.
It would take that Outlot A or whatever to be developed?
Correct. I believe in...
Yeah, we plan on putting a gravel road off of 20th, so that the trucks and stuff don't come through Eisenhower Village to do their work, and off the gravel into kind of a gravel road.
But it wouldn't be a public access.
Yeah, it would be a construction entrance, instead of bringing them through Eisenhower Village, but yes, that road would not be open to the public.
And then the road that connects into Hickory Heights?
Yes.
Is that going to be done, when this is?
Yes, that is correct. Yes.
That kind of has a stub in there already, doesn't it?
Yes, there's a stub. It's not subbed completely to the property line, but it will be extended into this development.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the final plat for Anna State's first edition to City Council.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries? Second item is plat of survey for parcel N.
All right, so Greg and Lisa Gash are the applicants for this plat of survey. If you take a look at the aerial map, you'll see that there's two properties that are highlighted. Those are the two properties that are being combined into the parcel N. Essentially, the Gashes are looking at selling their properties, and they were having some issues with sellers not being sure what they can and can't do with those two properties. So to simplify things, he wanted to combine the two lots into just one large lot. It'll be .76 acres. Currently, he has a multi-deed lot agreement tying the property that his house sits on with the property directly to the north. He'll maintain that multi-deed lot agreement that essentially ties the properties together, so as long as that's in place, you can't sell the lots, you can't sell an individual lot without selling the other, so also allow them to have, continue to have the accessory structure that they have on that, will be parcel N on that lot. Essentially, the mindset with that is, this lot is big enough that if somebody wants to break that and build a single-family home on what would be parcel N, they'd be able to do that. They have the access to the Fifth Street. It's large enough to put a single-family house on, but it's just that Gash owns all the properties currently, so that's, that's why he didn't combine all of his lots into one large lot. So, again, staff's recommendation is to approve the plat of survey.
He, so it states in there in the application that he owns four lots. Does he live on 33? And he owns 32?
Yeah, so he lives on...
Because it says that he owns, he owns four lots, so the application.
Yeah, so again, if you look at the aerial, the lot that ends with parts like D8001, that's actually, the legal description is actually two lots, so it's lots 32.
That's the one that he wants, yeah, he wants to combine that one.
Yeah.
So is he on 012?
Correct.
Yeah, that's where his dwelling is.
So those are the four that he owns?
Correct, and then he also owns the property that fronts the river.
Right.
So and then, but that property, you can't build anything, is located in the floodway, so again, he didn't want to tie it to the parcel N, because he didn't want to create potential problems there.
8001 has a shed on it.
Correct.
I explained it. Is there a motion?
I would move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the plat of survey for parcel M to the City Council.
All in favor?
We need a second.
Second. I'll second it.
I'm sorry? We needed a second.
I said second.
Come on, Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries? Next item is the former Irving School redevelopment.
No.
Don't three.
You skipped one.
You skipped one.
No, I skipped one, sorry. Parcel H for the City Council, to the City Council, sorry.
Yes, so this is a piece of property that is owned by Baker. Baker Construction. I've got mine mixed up as well, so I can't get the right gentleman out here. So Baker Concrete and Excavating. Mike Baker is the applicant on behalf of them. They are putting forward this plat of survey. If you look at the aerial, you can see the solid chunk of land, and then if you go to the plat of survey, you can basically see that they're just cutting out like, essentially it's going to work as a buffer. So when they, they're intending to use the portion of their property that's not going to be the parcel H, so what's left over as storage and staging for their equipment, and then the parcel H, they're going to maintain the trees and the grass as a buffer to the residential property to their west, southwest. That was something that they kind of negotiated out with that neighbor, they're, find that sufficient, so that's, that's the intent with this plat of survey.
So will it be up to the neighbor to make sure that construction equipment doesn't encroach on H?
If we get calls, we'll go out and we'll say, "Well, where's the property line? You need to make sure it's on the right one," so we'll handle that as, if it comes.
If he still owns both of them, what's to...
Yeah, that was my question, John.
Yeah, so I think it's more of just kind of a good, trying to be a good neighbor situation. Like I said, if we get complaints about it, we'll kind of address them as we come, but yes, they'll own both lots, so I mean...
Do they own the property to the north?
I don't believe that it's...
Very shaped one?
Yeah, so I don't believe that it's in the name of Baker, but they do, they're going to set up their office at, on, at that property.
So that's all on access?
That's, I was going to ask about access, yeah, so that makes sense.
Any other discussion, or are we, now we're going to have a motion on this one? Or does anybody have any other comments?
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the plat of survey for parcel H to the City Council.
I'll second.
Okay.
Is this in any way connected with the Kroll move?
So Kroll purchased the property that Baker is currently operating on, and then Baker's going to move to this kind of odd-shaped lot on the corner of Cedar River Parkway and Highway 3. So yes, kind of, sort of.
Is that fire training place just to the south of their main building there? Is that where that's going in at?
So I believe it's actually to the, so it'd be to the northwest of this property, but yeah, to the south of their actual building on the corner.
Yeah, so it'd be northwest of the turquoise.
Yes.
Square, yes.
Correct.
So did they own all, all this property, the north, the building, and, because you're creating a buffer, do they own the three properties north of this buffer space?
So on the corner, again, it was my understanding that they purchased this, but it's not in the Baker Concrete name, but they are the ones that are operating out of that building. And then they have purchased this lot that they're outlining from GNT.
Was there going to be, and it really didn't pertain to this, but is there going to be any issue in the fire department, or I guess that's their volunteers, that's separate from the city part, right? Will there be any issues when they go to build or construct their training facility there, or?
I don't believe so, that, I think, I believe that they'll be set back, that it shouldn't cause any problems.
Yeah, just curious, I'd like to, if there is something that we need to deal with, we deal with it before we start changing somebody's...
Yeah, and that's something, because they have kind of, sort of, an access road to this property right now, and that, they checked with the police department initially to make sure that they were placing it, because they, they couldn't find one of the pens, but they were pretty sure where it was, so they were asking them, and they said, "Well, yeah, it's right here." So they built that access road to make sure that it wasn't going to be encroaching on their, that property, so...
Oh, so they've got both sides.
There a motion yet?
Yeah, there's been a motion, a second.
I just let the discussion continue until it stops. Anybody else have anything to add? Okay, all in favor? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now we're on a Irving School redevelopment, RFP.
Okay, so this was another thing that we had brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission previously. When we brought it before, we were specifically asking for, to send out an RFP for townhomes. When we brought that to this commission and also the City Council, there was significant pushback. There was interest in developing the property for residential uses. So what this RFP is for is to send out, to gather proposals to develop the property either for R2 or for R3. So currently, the property is zoned R2, but there's R3 to the northeast of there. So we wanted to just include that in the RFP if a developer would so desire that they want to develop in that way. They would be required to rezone the property. However, this is solely a sending it out to see what we get back. We don't have an obligation to accept any of the proposals, but we want to see what developers are thinking. If there's a good development, we'll bring it to the commissions and ultimately City Council for approval.
So why is this, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ken.
So at this point, there is no zoning request or anything with this?
Correct.
And so the purpose for this item?
I'm with you. So what's our, what are we doing?
So we're...
What's the planning and zoning commission going to, what are you asking us to approve?
So what we're asking for you to approve is to move forward with the RFP. We wanted to present it before the commission. If there's anything that the commission thought should be changed in the RFP to tell us, we'll make those changes. And then we'll present it to City Council.
So I got a question. Why is it have to have the approval of the Economic Development Commission?
That would be...
Is that to determine whether or not it's a good deal?
I believe that Bill's kind of thought was they deal a lot with housing and they're the ones that kind of drove the housing study. So they wanted their input as well from a housing standpoint.
So have we had input from the residences that were against this last time to get their input before this RFP goes out or?
Again, we're taking that and the last time that we presented this to council, our, their direction that we received from them was we didn't like the townhome approach, but we felt that, or I'm speaking as if I was on council. But council's message was we didn't like the townhome idea, but we felt like this property should be developed somehow to meet the rest of the neighborhood. So then we're taking that and we're moving forward with this RFP.
What's the big difference between this one and that one?
With that one, we were specifically stating that we wanted RFPs for townhomes. So a specific type of housing. With this one, it is open to any type of housing that would be allowed in an R2 or R3.
R2, it was attached homes duplexes and single-family. R3 goes to three and four unit.
So I kind of recall that one of the objections to the earlier proposal had to do with density of what was being developed in that area. And by moving this from R2 to R3, it feels as if that increases the density.
Yep, so what we had originally brought forward with the townhomes would have required rezoning to R3. So yes, you are correct. That was, a lot of the pushback from the neighborhood was at the fear of the high density. So again, we just wanted to keep it broad so that we could get ideas from developers. And then we could present what they, they sent it to us to Economic Development, Planning, Zoning and City Council. And then let the commissions and the council make the decision on what is or is not developed on the property.
But this allows the same thing that it got defeated last time, right?
No, it never went to a...
But the design was the same. If somebody, if somebody were...
It allows the same design, though.
If somebody, if a developer were to put in a proposal for townhomes and it came to this commission and Planning and Zoning Commission decided that this time that they liked the idea, the City Council agreed, then yes, theoretically, it could allow for the same. It would, again, it would require the rezoning to R3. We'd have to go back through the public hearing process, notify all the neighbors, get their input. Yes, it could potentially, but the townhomes that we had previously presented, like I said, it required a R3 zoning change, which is why we had the public hearings about it, so.
I guess I'm kind of upset that we're coming right back at it, the same thing it was before. You know, that they could go that way. We're just trying to push it through again. And I, you know, and there was a lot of phone calls that were made at that time. And I guess I'm not real excited about, you know, allowing the same thing that, because there's been no changes to residences there. And then we're going to be back there and having these people call and, I don't know, maybe the rest of you didn't get many calls, but I had a lot of calls and went and met with them. And I just, I don't like what Bill's doing here. He's trying to force through his, what he wants done there. That's what I was told by the Economic Development Commission, you know, that he was, he's kind of pushing that same plan again. But that's just my, what I've heard from...
Sorry.
That's all right, go ahead.
The only real difference here is that they have an option of designing it to an R2 design standard. They're not forced to do it to an R3 design standard.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I mean, you're right, you know, but...
Okay.
A subtle difference immediately.
Yeah, yeah.
So in the, in the end, if someone, some firm completes this with a proposal?
Yes.
Then the next step would be that we would actually approve or disapprove the proposal or what?
Correct. So the proposal would have to be approved ultimately by City Council. And then they would have to have, submit the site plan for what they propose. And that again, would have to be approved before they could build anything. So that, that may be a, it's like I said, it's currently zoned R2. So theoretically, somebody could buy this lot and put one single-family house on it because that's allowed in R2. Somebody could put a proposal in to Dave, what Dave's talking about, for townhomes. And again, if it's approved by the commissions and by City Council, then they would need to go through the R3 rezoning. We'd go back through the public hearing. So just like Kate said, really, the big difference here is that we are substantially saying we think a R2 or an R3 development best suits this property. We want to send out an RFP, see what we get back. If it's R2, great. If it's R3, great. If we don't like any of the proposals, then it'll remain as it is right now.
So it's really a test to see if there are any developers out there who can do something that would be economically viable, provide the kind of housing that they think Waverly needs and can be built affordably on that site in either a single-family home kind of plan because it's allowed in R2 or an R2 kind of limiter.
Correct.
And we already know what can be done at R3, really.
Correct.
So let's, let's suppose that the only response to the RFP is a single family dwelling. And I guess I have a couple of questions around that. Is there any grounds for refusal of that? How do you set the value of the property? How does the city set the value of the property? And does it vary whether it's R1 or 2 or 3? It wouldn't be R1 potentially, but it could be a single-family dwelling.
So I know with part of the incentive for develop, potential developers for this property is, previously, we talked about essentially selling the property for like a dollar or something. That would be something that would be worked out between Bill, James and City Council. If somebody were to, if the only person that were to respond to this RFP was somebody that wanted to put a single-family, single residence on this property, staff would recommend denying that proposal. We think that there's better, even if they split it up to four parcels and put four single families, that would be a better use of this property than just one single-family home. That's, that would be staff's opinion on that. But again, the city owns the property, so we would have, the city would have the final say on whether or not they want to accept a proposal and then ultimately sell the property to the developer for that proposal. So the RFP is not saying that if one person submits a proposal that we're bound to accept that. It just, we want to see what developers think about developing this property. And then we'll review it, select the one that we think is best. Commissions think is best, council thinks is best, and we'll move forward that way.
So one of the, I know one of the questions that, that was part of this process earlier had to do with owner occupied. And is that a factor then that could be considered as a part of this RFP? You know, are there other?
I think that's it.
Is that in there?
I think we addressed that we would, it'd be our preference at least that they were owner occupied.
Well, there's like on section J, it says if condo units are developed, they should be restricted to be owner occupied properties and not maintained as rental housing. I mean, that's a part of the RFP.
Correct, so that's, yes, three development objectives, J, yes.
And the other thing is, one of the evaluation guidelines is that it basically be compatible with surrounding dwellings. And I don't think the townhome had that in it at all. I mean, it was contrary. And as far as density, some of us can remember when that was a school with all the fifth graders in Waverly plus a K through 4 elementary. And every school bus in the school system stopped there twice a day. You know, I know, I know we don't want to go back there, but, and it also was a, was the dining facility for the entire middle school and all the kids in that school as well. And so you had a huge amount of traffic getting out of that spot. You know, anything that would be on 1.6 with residential, either R2 or R3 is going to be a whole lot less than that.
I didn't feel that the issue in the past was whether it was a townhome or not. I thought it was more of a density issue that was concerned among the neighbors.
I, you know, yeah, based upon, you know, there was a lot of issues, you know. Who's going to live there? You know, college students that are going to come and go. I mean, then it was also what's it going to look like, the contextual setting within the local community? I mean, it was in the paper. Everybody kind of, I don't know if they remember that.
So I'm kind of...
I mean, there's, there's going to be a lot of people that are going to, there's always going to be something that's not going to please every single person that's going to be a neighbor to that. Unless it's a single-family home.
So my question is, because I'm against this right now as it says, because I think he's just trying to run it back through. That's what he wants. He said that from the start when he talked to us before. Why didn't we look at four or five single-family lots and see, run that up the flagpole and see if there's an RFP for that? You know, somebody, the developer buying that and being sectioned off into four, five? I don't know what would be the best there, but matching up with the rest of the neighborhood and put that out there as an RFP instead of trying to, because I think he's just trying to push that again because he's talking really what we saw before. You know, that somebody can come in and offer, you know, the other alternative. But I just don't want to go through the same headache we went through before. But that's, that's just me.
I mean, it does seem to me like the only economically viable thing that's, given the avail, that you can do anything basically here. The thing that's most economically viable is to build it dense. And it's hard to disagree with Dave here that that's what you're going to get back by the virtue, virtually, because that's what's written in here. To make it be economically viable, it's just what you're going to get back. The only way you're ever going to test whether, you know, five or six residential lots is viable is by putting that RFP on the street.
Is the city's primary interest in getting rid of this piece of property?
From the Community Development Department, we think that this is a good infill project. So we think that it'd be best used to be developed for residential purposes. As Dave and Kate have kind of said, from the get-go, we thought that townhomes was a great development for this property. The neighbors made it very clear that they disagreed with that. In the last, like I said, the last conversation we had at City Council was that they agreed with the neighbors that they thought that the townhome idea was too dense for the neighborhood. But they agreed that they thought that some sort of development on the property was a good idea.
Did they disagree because there were too many downtown homes? Or did they disagree fundamentally with the idea that there might be townhomes?
I think that they were primarily concerned with the density of the development.
Yes, I recall that. I agree.
I don't think this RFP is going to get you a proposal that's less dense than that because they have the option to give you a proposal that meets that density requirement. And that's going to be more economically viable.
Can I ask a question? How is the RFP process going to happen?
So if it's, the RFP is approved, we'll send it out to different developers, then we'll post it. I forget where we posted the comp plan RFP, but we'll probably post some similar sites for potential developers, builders to respond.
With the assumption that all RFPs could be denied or rejected?
Yes, correct.
And nothing's been rezoned?
Correct.
We, you know, that cross that bridge, what?
Kind of, they find something they like and then they'll have to bring it here. And we'll go through all the same, if it happens to be a dense property proposal. And we'll have to go through the same thing we did last time.
What I'm, when I read this, I'm somewhat confused. I think it maybe can help me out. So so R2 allows for duplexes right now?
Correct.
For two-unit attached homes?
So R2 currently allows for single-family homes, duplexes, and then zero lot line. Technically, they'd be single-family homes, but it's the duplexes that the lot line is split down the middle of the units.
So if you sold it to, if the city sold it to me tomorrow, I could, then I could lay it out. I could put six duplexes on that property.
Correct, as long as you meet all other R2 requirements.
Yes, you know, yeah, access.
Correct.
So if I, if I recall though, Dave, we, there were no proposals put forth in that prior process. It was only some, here are some dreams or examples of what it could be. But there was never a response to any kind of an RFP.
I think what happened, helped me and, you know, and I kind of, my memory's getting bad, was that the public became aware of what was going on, either through the media or through word of mouth or however.
We actually met with neighbors.
And, and they, you know, of course, they just said, we hear this is what's happening. We're not exactly sure what it is, but we don't want to have a really dense place, you know. But they didn't know what was being proposed because, because nothing had been proposed. Because no RFPs had gone out yet.
Well, they had in the paper what the, you know, what they would like, you know, and that got everybody stirred up. And I think it was 17 units, townhouse units. And so they started taking a look at what the traffic was going to be.
And there were like 25 feet, they were two-story and, or three-story or whatever.
It was just two-story, no basement, one-car garage.
Right.
Maybe it's my, what I do for a living that makes me ask this question. But I feel like the approach here is somewhat misguided. And maybe that's not the right word, but you're looking for a developer to do something, to buy a property, put an idea on the table, buy the property, and then come up with a design that really meets the guidelines. Now, you're trying to control the guidelines, I get it, and the aesthetics of it, so that it works with the neighborhood. As a design professional, my point of view kind of works a little differently, which is maybe you should test some designs first and then find a developer.
A little backwards.
Kind of. Like, why wouldn't you hire a design team to say, let me show you what it would look like if it were townhomes? Let me show you what it would look like it was single-family homes? And put that out to the public, get a response, get their input, get some sort of buy-in from the community, and then find a developer that you know, that can develop something that, that community has already bought into. I feel like it's a little cart before the horse eat for me.
So, program it first.
Basically, yeah. I mean, I understand why there's a desire for denser housing, for, you know, more affordable housing. I understand all that, and I don't necessarily disagree that this isn't a spot that would be fairly reasonable for that. It's near services, right? I get it. But clearly, the neighborhood doesn't want that. But what does the neighborhood want? They, they're not designers, they don't know, they can't really see it, they can't visualize it. Maybe what the city needs to do if they really want to get rid of that property is put a design on the table, or a couple of designs on the table, and sell the idea rather than kind of keep, kind of repeating the same thing.
The difficulty with that in the public sector is that then you've got to go through a process to pick a designer, because you can't just.
That's true.
Can't just hire a guy off the street to do that, okay? So, that's a process.
Although you don't have to have, you don't have to put an RFP out for professional services.
Um, yes and no. You know, I, I think for this, you probably would, and you'll end up with a team of, of someone, you know. Personally, I think this is a way to, is, is a way to get proposals. You're not locking the city into anything, they can reject them. And what happens if somebody comes in and says, I want to build four twin homes, eight units, and I want the city to give this property to me for a dollar so I can make it financially viable? Would they turn that down? I don't know. Maybe, maybe not. But I think it's a way to cast out and, and try to get some interest, particularly from more local builders, unless putting, unless you're putting, you know, a lot of strings on it.
I mean, I think that that is the intent.
Yeah.
I, I just, didn't work last time. Why is it going to work this time?
Well, I think that gets right back to that density issue. So, if a, if an RFP comes back and it's for 17 more units in, or seven, whatever that was, in, in that particular space, that was a real point of contention.
You don't want to go there.
Excuse me?
You just don't want to go there.
It's not.
But then you're going to do it again.
Yeah. I think that's what I'm trying to say is, let's try something different to put that for the RFP instead.
Yeah, I mean, is there a limit you could put on density or a range of density that could be helpful or?
Well, I think that that goes to Dave's point, is why not put something that reduces the density as the only option on the table?
Well, you know, this is what's been proposed to us. I'll tell you right now, I'm not going to vote for it, and, you know, so it's up to the rest of the group here what they want to do, but I think, as is, I don't think this is a viable RFP to me, where I'm coming from.
Well, I, I think that's fundamental of the question. What, what would be done with the RFPs to yield responses that might be acceptable?
Acceptable to whom?
Well, it's a combination. It would be, how does the, how to, that's a whole process in and of itself, to work with the neighborhood, to work with the city, to work with the designer, to work with, but I, you know, I, I, I don't want to say it's an impossible thing.
I wasn't paying a whole lot of detail to the other, but the feeling I got from the publicity and the press is they, you know, the neighborhood mostly just wants us to stay an empty lot. But right now, if the city found the builder and wanted to build R2 density homes on that, six, four homes or five homes, that would not have to come through here, except it would be a subdivision, and you'd be pretty hard-pressed to turn it down. But the neighborhood, do you think the neighborhood would agree to that?
Well, in my different meetings, I got tired of meeting, to be honest with you, but they were fine with single-family homes, you know.
Well, but it allows twin homes on there.
Yeah, well, twin homes, I don't think they, they just didn't want the density, is what they was told to me. But they sure, their, their preference was to be in a park or whatever and.
Oh, why would it not be? I mean.
Yeah, no, but they knew that that's not going to be viable, but I mean.
One of the fundamental problems I have is, I don't think the city should be in the subdivision business. That's why it needs somebody to request a proposal to get somewhere.
Yeah.
Do you need our approval or a recommendation to move this far? Or are you just doing it because you want to be respectful?
Or they're asking, they're asking. Well, that was the initial, after question. Why do you need approval to go get an RFP?
We wanted, we wanted to put this in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Economic Development Commission, and then get your thoughts, if a motion from you guys, a recommendation, and then we wanted to take it to the city council and say, this is what the economic development feels, this is what the Planning and Zoning Development Commission feels. Now, you guys make a decision.
So, if you were to go back to the city with the results of this discussion, what, what would you tell them?
So, what I would do is I would complete the minutes, and then I would attach the minutes to the RFP when it goes to city council. So, then they could read through it, and they could read what this commission discussed, your guys' feelings on it, and then, again, they can make the decision.
So, that can be done whether we approve this or not?
I, I would feel, I feel like regardless if, whether it's recommended to approve, recommend to deny, that decision will go to city council and this RFP will be brought to city council.
Can we recommend that you rewrite it so that it has a very different flavor than what it did, that it does now, because it's not different from last time?
You could absolutely, you could approve it contingent upon X, Y, and Z has changed. You could, yeah, and you could certainly do that.
What if we tabled it?
That would be the commission's prerogative.
Okay, but what happens if that were the case? I mean, what, what would happen in the meantime until it came to us again at the end of the table?
If you, if the commission decided to table it, what I would do is I would go back and I would try to make the changes to the RFP that the commission felt was deemed necessary, and then I would present it to my superiors and they would take the next steps.
I mean, I was sensitive. If this discussion were documented and presented to the city council, I think they would probably have some of the same concerns that, that we do. That would be my hunch.
I also feel like this should have been more of a work session on this rather than a thing put in front of us to vote on. And if we table it, then it essentially is a work session.
Yep. One of the things I might encourage everybody to do at some point, whether we move forward or right now, is, you know, there's, a lot of this is just procedural, you know? Here's the information about the facility, here's the, you know, the property, and here's the process we're going to go through and all of that, the guideline. But the developmental, the development objectives in section three kind of lays out what they're hoping and thinking about, and what the developer would do. And I don't think it's, it's suggesting or pointing him in a direction of high density or low density. Now, if he's a smart developer, he's going to say, geez, historically, you know, the neighbors don't really want a high density, so if I'm going to do a proposal, I'm going to do it within the framework of what this objectives are. So, approving it, I don't think really, in, just in my opinion, doesn't really hurt anything because it's just going to go forward. Is it going to continue just to do a, you know, cyclical, you know, a dog chasing its tail? Maybe. Maybe, maybe a developer's going to come back and say, I'm going to do five, five homes, that's it, you know? Or it might be a guy that says, I'm going to do three duplexes, six units, be done with it. And if a guy comes back and he says, I want to rezone it to R3, and I want to put in 25 units there, that's his proposal, but it's probably not going to go anywhere. But I don't want to stymie the process of development of this property by not having an RFP go forward.
I agree.
I think. Because if you don't, I'm sorry, if you don't, my last thing, Dave, just if you don't put anything out there, then it's just going to, it's going to sit there again. It's just not, nothing's going to happen.
Okay. Right, and I agree. I think, I think what, what I'm hearing is like, there's certain sections of this that, where it speaks to the R3 specifically, right? It's, that's, that's kind of the, the hot topic trigger words here. But at the same time, I think, you know, to, to say you can't do anything with it zoned as it is is wrong as well, right? I mean, that's not, it doesn't feel like our role to say, hey, you can't get a quote on this. To me, this is just a quote, right? You just want a quote, whether it's a new machine or it's a housing development in this, in this context, I think. And then whether or not you choose to buy it, I think the, the slippering point that I see inside with some of you guys, I think, is, is where it does say R3 quite a bit within this proposal. You know, and it is very specific, it says that would require rezoning and the official process to get there, but at the same time, I don't know how to say it succinctly, but, you know, if you're going to develop it as it's zoned, then it's R2, right? Which would allow this or that. If you're going to just say, hey, as many times as it mentions the R3, that is kind of a sticking point, I think.
In the, in the schedule, it makes it pretty clear, I think, that the R3 might be a hurdle that they have difficulty getting over. But, you know, well.
What if it just got rid of any reference to R3? And it just allowed it to be developed with the R2 that it is today? That would be different than the last time around.
So, that could be the commission's recommendation, is that the, RFP would be fine provided that it goes under an R2 zoning designation.
Sounds like a motion.
Because I mean, it, it's not like somebody's saying, well, it could be commercial. I mean, it's saying, well, you could make it R3 if you want to, you know? I mean, that's, that's kind of the tricky part for me. It can't mean anything. It could be what it is or R3. That's where it gets a little bit, I agree. If it, if it was kind of struck to be as it is for R2, it seems to make more sense as a RFP.
Would 18 condo units over there be problematic with the local community, local neighbors?
Would, say that again?
Would 18 condos be a problem with local, owner occupied condos?
I think so.
That there's too many?
I think it would be a question of.
I just write that out there, but.
Yeah, no, I think it's a question of how it fits with the, with the neighborhood in general, and I think there are density concerns and traffic concerns and all kinds of things like, like that. And where's, where's the street access and where's the, you know? There's been a timeframe between the time that it was Irving School and it was high traffic, and now it's been vacant, and they're kind of enjoying that.
And, exactly.
Why do they want to go back to high traffic?
You know, I really like it, you know, I like my view to the river. I hope, nobody builds a house between me and the river.
Yeah.
I have one more question though, before we wrap this up, because I feel like we're close to doing that.
Yep.
The development guidelines, they talk specifically about characteristics and, you know, things that the design has to have. How is that enforceable?
Just like we did with the, the, not the PFW, you know, we said we could put these banners.
That was special provisional.
And I know, but, you know, we did, we can make subject, I think we can make anything subject.
So, yeah, we would probably enter a development agreement, and then we would specify in the development agreement that the structures of the development has to look, how it was presented in the RFP proposal. So, that, that would be how, that would be enforced.
Well, because if it's an R2 district today and it gets sold for R2 development, it only gets sold as R2 development with these added caveats that don't exist in the ordinance today.
Correct.
Okay.
And they'd have to meet the square footage for the lot for all that, and I don't know.
Sure.
I didn't go back and calculate that, how many could actually, I don't know.
But that stuff's built into the existing ordinance.
Yes, correct.
Things like building materials are not, porch canopies, and certain things in here are driven by design character to make it be similar to the neighborhood they're going to be built in. I understand why. I just don't think, I just personally don't understand how the ordinance, you have to amend the agreement for development.
I do believe that a huge issue with the nearby residents had to do with it being owner occupied, and that was not clear whether that would be the case or not in that prior proposal.
That is, appears to.
Well, that would, no, that was, that was pretty clear that it had to be owner occupied and.
It was just a, it was just a vision of what this might be.
I know, but I mean, that was what the vision was, is that it'd be owner occupied.
I would agree with that, but there were, I don't know, to Kate's point, I don't know.
We never got far enough.
That could have been enforced, it didn't get far enough, yeah.
I think we're just trying to delay this because nobody else wants to be in chair.
But we can't.
I'm just kidding.
Okay.
We can regulate owner occupancy.
I'm supporting if you take out the R3.
You can't say you have to be owner occupied.
Well, that was the question in that prior proposal.
But you can't do that.
But this is saying, I, I don't know that you can or can't. I don't know, I don't know that.
Unless you want to put a, you know, I mean, they talk about an HOA association, so you're buying your unit. Yeah, that's like, that would be like Eisenhower or the Fairways or any of those that they were, but by the same token, Eisenhower rents units out on a temporary basis.
Yeah, I, I certainly know authority on whether that can be enforced or not. I, I don't know.
Well, we talked a lot of different things here. I'll, I'll unmove the planning zoning recommend approval subject to eliminating the R3 references in this RFP to, of the Irving School redevelopment request for the proposal to the city council. And that's kind of what you were saying, wasn't it?
Kate, I think was saying.
It was Kate, yeah. I don't remember which one.
So, you're saying removing the R3.
References.
References.
Yeah.
A second.
There's better than that discussion.
And Doug, can we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so, the motion is move planning zoning commission recommend approval of the Irving School redevelopment request for proposal to city council, subject to the removal of R3 references in the request for proposal. Sound good? Okay. Doug Ben Skuter?
Yes.
Stephanie Garner?
Yes.
Dave Huser?
Yes.
Dave Larson?
Yes.
John Meyer?
No.
Kate Payne?
Yes.
Kathy Olson?
Yes.
Phew. Good to flip that one over.
Raise your hand, raise your hand if you went to fifth and sixth grade at Irving.
No, but I worked there.
I only did fifth grade.
I was in fifth and sixth grade.
Fifth grade. He was still in elementary on the south end.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Any old business?
I do, I have two pieces of old business. One, MSA will be having, hosting a joint meeting between planning and zoning, board of adjustments, and economic development. I think that's, their leisure services commission might be involved in that joint commission is, meeting as well. That will be May 25th at 6:00 PM. It'll be a two-hour meeting, 6:00 to 8:00. It'll be in the civic center across the hallway here. I'll send out a reminder notification of that. We ask that as many commission members as can attend, please attend that, so.
Wasn't there something set out already on that?
There was.
It was.
Yeah, and there is an event last week that was more of just an introduction to the public. This will be, this joint meeting will be more of a, this is the feedback that we've gotten from that meeting and the survey, online surveys. These are going to be the next steps. This is what you, we want you guys to review and start looking at in comments, et cetera on.
What kind of attendance did you have for that meeting?
We had estimate at least 50, 50, 60 people. The online surveys, the comprehensive plan, I think we've had right around maybe 100 replies. Last I checked on the park and open space survey, there was upwards. The online surveys, the comprehensive plan, I think we've had right around maybe 100 replies. Last I checked on the Park and Open Space survey, there was upwards of 530 responses. So that's extremely good reply to that survey, so. But we've been very happy with the turnout thus far, so.
And they're doing something at the Art Walk or what?
Yes, they're going to have a pop-up booth at the Art Walk this Saturday.
Correct.
And it might even be a decent day.
Yeah, it looks like it, so.
I don't know where this weather changes from today. We're supposed to have rain today.
Spring, please.
And then the other piece of old business that I have, last commission meeting, we talked about reducing the size of the commission from nine members to seven members. We did take that to City Council at the May 2nd City Council meeting, and they voted 7-0 to approve that. It'll go to a second reading on the 16th, and then a third reading on June 6th. So if those are the same votes, then we'll have the commission of seven members. So we're, we're going to keep the commission at seven members until that time. If it's, ultimately doesn't pass, then we'll start sending notices out inviting people to apply to fill the two empty spots, so. That's all the old business I have.
So going back to an earlier question, we're seven. Let, let's suppose that for whatever reasons, the only way that you can't get a quorum unless somebody, somebody participates remotely. Are we, we're just playing that, doing that?
I think that is how we're going to go about it at this point.
So we would just not meet the quorum and schedule another meeting or whatever?
Okay, is that all? The end of old business?
That's all I have for old business.
Moving on to new business, election of officers.
Are you willing to take the chairmanship again, Doug?
I would say if anybody's interested in either one, I would invite them to volunteer as well, so.
I was just going to go ahead and recommend you.
I was being nice.
You need to be respectful.
Are you willing to take it again?
No, if somebody else wants to do it, that's, I'd be happy to let, and it's, it's, we're a community of participation.
I've done my standup about eight or 10 years. I don't know. I don't need to go there again.
Yeah, when were you on this commission for so long?
I don't know.
When did you start on this commission, just out of curiosity?
I think it was '92 or something.
We have digital records back to 2000 if you were still on at that point, so, oh boy.
Project Lead graduate that year, I think.
Oh, that might have been, I think it was '92.
Do, is there, is it, is there a requirement to do election of office once a year?
Yes.
Okay.
Every May?
Yes.
Well, I'll move the Planning and Zoning Commission, like Doug Ben Skuder, as its chairperson. I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed?
Who's vice chair right now?
Now we need a vice.
Mary French was vice chair.
Oh, okay, so.
But she's no longer. She's retired.
Correct.
But this is a good question because you may have a meeting or two.
Well, I'm, you know.
When you won't be here.
I won't be here like in January, February. Well, I came back in March, but, anyway, February. When it's cold, I won't be here.
Well, I'll put my name out for vice chair, okay?
Oh, great. Well, I move.
I'll second.
Planning is, there we go.
No, that Dave.
Yes.
Doug?
Thank you, guys.
All in favor of Dave Larson as the vice chair?
I.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Dave, you're going to be doing a lot.
I, I am. I had one. It was a tough one.
I know, I was with you, or no, I was on the, I was on the phone.
That was interesting.
Yeah. Boy, that got, I couldn't hear. I couldn't hear that. Tricky. Very well. Any other business? Are the vice chair adjourned?
I move it adjourned.
Okay.
All in favor or not?
I. There's no more business. You just go.